Please, Mr. Placko from Colorado, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi is absent. Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First thing up is I'm going to motion to approve the minutes for the December 12, 2017 meeting, December 26, 2017, January 8 tax budget hearing, January 8 organizational meeting, and January 8 special meeting if I could have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Any discussion? Colorado, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Motion cleared. That takes us to special reports, Mr. Kales.
We do have a special report here. Jennifer, we have Cassie Smolin from Buckeye here to give an update on all the good things that are happening at Buckeye Elementary School.
And I brought our PTA co-presidents. Oh, come on up. Alright, so we're excited to present all the good stuff that's going on here at Buckeye. I have our two co-presidents for our PTA board. This is Jessica Carupa and this is Angie DeFranco. We're going to start off, and I chose, there's lots of good stuff to share, kind of just some updates. Thank you.
Looks good on the computer.
Nice tripping, guys, we're going through that.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. So, some of our focal points we're going to talk about is our PTA. We have a very active, a very ambitious PTA. We have two co-presidents, obviously, that I just introduced, and we have two co-vice presidents. Our treasurer, our secretary, and then an addition that we added what, a couple of years ago, was the Grants and Programs Director, Mrs. John Kalin. Lots of things that are going on, and I'll let Mrs. DeFranco and Mrs. Carupa kind of take over. But just some highlights, community partnerships have been a big thing for Buckeye this year. We've had a lot of support and a lot of generous donations that have been given to us for various projects that we've been trying to complete. The first two, and this is right fresh off the press with our Buckeye Reads, we had Malle's Chocolate as well as Adventure Subaru support us, and we'll talk a little bit of how they did that. During our Veterans Day Assembly, PTA reached out to WAGS for Warriors for donations. And then, Painesville Baptist Church, we had a revamp of our landscape. We had some pretty big bushes that were taken out in landscaping and bushes that were replaced. They held out with the carnival and then holiday gift bags for some of our students that were a little less fortunate for the holidays. Two things that are new this year that we're very appreciative of is a donation of a K-2 Book Room. That arrived right before Christmas, and it's a 6,000 leveled books. So, they come in packets, letters A through M, reading levels, and that's something that was of need for our teachers, that they requested, and PTA was able to provide for us. Pretty hefty donation there. Their Buckeye Reads program, which I'll end our presentation with, Spirit Days, family movie nights, father-daughter dance, something that's coming up this weekend, is our first annual Night at the Races. It's a fundraiser at the Holiday Inn, and the Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair, Santa Shop. PTA also bought us a Chromebook cart this year. They help out with staff dinners and are very generous to us during Teacher Appreciation Week. And then, the end of the year, we have a pretty fun carnival, which is enjoyable, gets pretty good attendance, and just a fun time for families to bring them into our school as a community. Don't know if there's anything?
No, I mean, I think you hit all the points. I mean, we can elaborate on every single one of them, but we don't want to take up all the time. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's great. I mean, the K-2 Book Room, I think that was fabulous, and I think that our hopes is maybe next year we can do like a 2 through 5 or something to try and incorporate the whole school. That's what we try and do when we do things. We try and do it where it's going to help the whole school, but sometimes you have to do a chunk and then another little chunk to try and, you know, incorporate everybody. But, yeah, I mean, I think that kind of had a lot of good points.
And PTA had us, we put out a Google Doc where teachers could, their ultimate wish lists, and we put it out, teachers responded, and the K-2 Book Room, you can see a picture here of our books and then our Chromebook cart. And then, also, there's a nice picture of our PTA members helping out at our Santa Shop. So, very festive. Community, today we had a huge writing celebration. This comes along with the Lucy Cockens Readers Writers Workshop. Nick was there, and you can check out his pictures on Facebook and all of that, but there was a huge, I opened the door and there's parents galore. Hello! But it was nice, and a lot of grandparents that showed up, siblings, and the kids were just as proud as could be. So, the Lucy Cockens, and that's something that's been going on in the district for a couple of years now. But the writing celebrations invite the families into our schools, the kids get to showcase their work. It is really enjoyable, and we had a huge crowd today, and they end it with refreshments, and they go home with their parents at the end of the day. Warm hands and friendship, we had a glove drive. Buckeye, along with Lamuth and John R., we had a new family move into our district that reached out to us for help, and help they got. We were able to provide for them for the holidays, lots of donations, lots of gifts, lots of gift cards. The family was very appreciative, so that was a very feel-good type of thing right before the holidays. We have lots of people that come into our schools. We have Junior Achievement working with us, the Ohio State University Extension. We had the Illuminating Company come in for the Energize Guys for energy conservation. We work with the VFW Post 2595, they come into 3rd grade class, Mr. Fields class. Lake Metro Parks were here. We had some of our staff participate in the community kindness. One of the pride, I think one of our staff is most proud of this year, we had an amazing Veterans Day Assembly. Kind of delegated out to the staff and the ones that are really excited, come to the rescue, and really put together a huge Veterans Day Assembly. We had over 40 veterans attend that were family and friends of our school. At 9:30, we had a continental breakfast for them, for the veterans and their families. We had the kiddos come down, meet their family members at the door, greet them, introduce them, and they went and had some food that was donated by Costco in Mayfield Heights. We provided gift bags for all of our veterans, so each veteran that came, we were able to give them a gift bag. Local restaurants donated free meals on Veterans Day. The kids wrote cards and poems. They made little bracelets. WAGS for Warriors donation from our PTA. Leo Robinson was our veteran and his dog, Coda, attended. The kids loved that. He said, "There's an animal."
That was pretty huge. If anybody's looking to do anything, go ahead and contact them, because they were really great to work with, really great organization, and, I mean, the dog was like the head of the assembly.
Oh, yeah. We couldn't just exit the building during June. We had a single file.
The dog was so good, because we sat him right up front, and he was like a black lab, and he was just laying there. And I would say about halfway through, Ms. Smolin mentioned the dog, and none of the kids even knew he was there, because he was so well behaved. I thought, "Oh, what's his trick?" You know?
Yeah. So, WAGS for Warriors, they provide veterans, basically like therapy dogs.
Yeah, yeah. They're like therapy dogs, they're free of charge for the veteran, and they find, I believe what they do is they go to shelters, and they save dogs, and they try and match up, you know, a dog with a veteran based on the type of dog, you know, if it's a real crazy dog, you know, if the vet needs a quieter dog, and they kind of pair them up, and everybody's happy.
That's cool.
Yeah.
We have photo booth, so a lot of grandparents got in with their grandkids for the photo booth. Probably, there wasn't a dry eye, and I wish I had the video clip, but it's on my Twitter feed. Our entire school sang, we had our music teacher there, and she had been preparing a song to sing to the veterans called "Thank You, Veterans," and we had grades K-2 had on little flag hats, and then grades 3 through 5, we gave them all flags to wave, so they all had them hidden, and then as they started to sing, the flags started to pop up, and the kids were singing, and I look out at the staff, and the veterans especially, pretty meaningful for them. And our guest speaker was RJ Thacker. He was a Fleet Marine Corps, Force, Navy corpsman, '91 to 2006. So, there's our gift bags we had for each of the veterans, nice continental breakfast. The Mrs. Franz, she's our phys ed teacher, she has a knack for doing bulletin boards, and she had bulletin boards and signs all over our gym. She did a very nice job. Kids created, of course. There's our photo prop booth, so we had lots of veterans get their pictures taken with their grandkids or their family members. There's RJ Thacker, he was our speaker. We had our veterans seated up front, some families enjoying the continental breakfast. There's Leo, and there's a single file. Yeah, everybody's petting the dog on their way out.
Eli, every single kid at Buckeye pet that dog. Every single kid, that was pretty cool.
It was a long dismissal.
Yeah.
And then, Mrs. Carupa, there she is, presenting the check to WAGS to Warriors. This is when we were singing "Thank You, Veterans." You can see that K-2 students had their flag hats, then the flags were being waved in the back. It was very, very nice, enjoyable. Students and staff talked a little bit about that. One of the highlights is the 5th grade band. That's enjoyable to hear the sounds coming from the music room. They're very excited to carry their instruments, so that's, that's a blessing to have that back in our district. Getting transportation and getting ready for our spring musical, music concert, technologies ago, arts ago, phys ed's ago, something's always going on in the elementary schools. And that's amazing. Alicia Eliazi, she's there on the left. She's a Buckeye student. This is her last week. She was a 4th grade champ, and then she competed tonight, and she is our district champion. So, she'll be going on to the Lake County Spelling Bee. Yeah. She's been preparing, Mom said this has been a life dream of hers since kindergarten, so dreams do come true, and she's going to represent us. She's a smart cookie. The picture on the right, we implemented a new dismissal. It's safety control. We have our 5th grade students that ride the same buses as our primary students in K-1 and 2. They come to the classrooms and they take the students out to the buses. They hold hands, and they walk them there. If they're walking, they take them out to their parents. If they're going to Latchkey, they walk them down to the gym. So, it's a very safe dismissal. And then, finally, to end it, this is what we did yesterday. This is our 3rd year in a row we've done Buckeye Reads. We choose a book that the school reads together. We do activities, we have a kickoff. Last year was Charlotte's Web. This year is Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, and PTA is very instrumental in making this happen. On the left-hand side, our art teacher, Chris Porstowski, created the design for t-shirts that PTA bought us. And on the right-hand side is one of our literacy coaches, Rich Schmidt. He was Willy Wonka yesterday.
He even did a cartwheel.
Did a cartwheel.
It was pretty funny. I was like, "Oh."
To make it happen, on Saturday, we opened up Buckeye, and there's parents that came in, and PTA. They each took a bulletin board and decorated our school to a T with candy and Willy Wonka galore. Our entrance has candy, we have the Golden Gates. Our stage, our books were donated by Adventure Subaru this year. It was about a $1,700 donation that they purchased our books. We have, Mrs. Carupa actually made our candy cake there on the right-hand side. Very talented.
Very fun.
We had some Oompa Loompas with Mr. Schmidt, and then, that's a sampling of each of our bulletin boards that were at the school. Each grade, or each teacher has a bulletin board outside their classroom. They were covered up in black paper after the assembly. The teachers went and tore down the black paper, they got to see their bulletin board, they're a hoot, and then they go on a tour of the school to check out everybody else's bulletin boards. So, it was very lively in the halls at the end of the day yesterday. We did a readers theater skit, so everybody had their own acting moment. I was Charlie. I'm in the front picking chocolate grass. And the rest of our teaching and our BLT staff and volunteers that wanted to participate, it was, it was a cute little readers theater. Adventure Subaru did show up, and we thanked them with a candy cake and a t-shirt, and they were very appreciative, and they said they're looking forward to helping us out every single year from here on out. They were very impressed with the assembly. Mrs. Klingenberg, who had a friend that worked at Adventure Subaru, he contacted her after the assembly, said he was impressed, he was very, you could tell the appreciation, and he said, "Don't ever hesitate to ask in the years to come for their support." So, Mr. Chuck Willis and Rachel Lufkin came out. We also had them grab a stack of books and pass them out to the students. There's all our kiddos. And then, on the right-hand side, we had chocolate bars. Malle's Chocolate donated candy bars to us. Do they donate?
We purchased them for a small fee. They gave us a very good deal on them.
So, each student got a chocolate candy bar, and what they did in production is they included a golden ticket in five of them. So, they actually had it within the candy bar wrapper. And so, five of our students, after we gave them their chocolate bars, they opened up their wrappers, found their golden tickets. That earns them a pizza party with me, complete with a chocolate fountain on Friday to dip strawberries and Rice Krispie Treats in. So, that was fun.
What time?
Right.
I know, that's exactly that.
Did you get a ticket? Did you win?
Well, Mrs. DeFranco's actually, we were talking today at the writing celebration, and she has one of the big ones for like a wedding. I'm like, "No, we don't need that." And then, she has a fondue one, so we're actually fondueing, as she can say. So, to end it, this is our Buckeye Reads website. It's, everything's contained here in one spot, and Mrs. Erbach, who's our, oh, shoot, who's our tech guru, has created this, and it's everything Buckeye. So, this is the same, we've had 619 visitors since yesterday when we let it go live. So, we can definitely see that people are watching it. The current read, and this is nice, because Charlie's hard to read for some kids, so our staff stepped up, and if you ever want to listen to anybody read it, I don't know how to scroll down. There. Each one of our teachers picked a chapter, and you can listen to it at home, they listen to it during IE time, so it's kind of nice, you get a different teacher each night to read it to you. I know the kids would really like that. We have the blog opportunity. On our news, we share this with, just to thank who's helped us out, our PTA, and then we had Adventure Subaru and Malle's. And then, this is just a concluding video to kind of show, it's two minutes long, what yesterday was like. Winners on Friday are going to be joining me for a pizza party, and a special edition, we're going to have a chocolate fountain in which you'll be able to dip strawberries in. We're just going to try to all that good stuff to celebrate Women of the Year. So, world of pure imagination. So, the highlight so far has been just really enjoying our one school, one book, our Buckeye Reads, and it's off to a good start. Not done yet, though.
It's amazing how lunch with Ms. Smolin is like, we're like going to Willy Wonka, right? I know, it's like the best place to be.
Yes, definitely. So, PTA, they wrapped up the Wonka bars, their Malle's chocolate bars, so you can enjoy the fun with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's Buckeye's report. Enjoy. That's awesome.
Welcome.
Thanks, ladies.
You're welcome.
Thank you for everything you do.
My pleasure.
That was awesome. Tickets still?
I'm so happy for you.
You also watch the game ticket for who's won.
One minute, Charlie.
Super cool.
Did you put one in?
There's no, I don't think that's enough.
You know, they had that after rocks.
Alright, that takes us to old business. If anybody has anything?
I've got.
Alright, how about new business?
We're not blocking any.
Alright. Alright, that takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. Superintendent's Business Advisory, the next meeting is Thursday, February 15. Right? Curriculum Programming, Mr. Miley.
Curriculum and Booster Organization. Curriculum Programming, we did not have a meeting because we just organized, but we'll be having one right before the next Board meeting.
I was going to ask you guys about this. That would be fantastic.
That'd work.
It turns out.
And then, the Booster Organization meeting is coming up on February 15. That's 6:30 in this room.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Finance and Audit and Personnel Strategic Plan, since Mrs. Grass is out here, Mr. Heck?
Yeah, we have not met since we were reorganized, and I suspect that we will meet before the next meeting, and the same applies for Billings and Grounds and Legislative Liaison.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Jeffries, Policy and Alumni?
This is a new committee that was just formed, and we have not met, and, but hopefully, we plan to meet soon here and in the near future. Alumni Association, there was no meeting set. The last meeting was December 11, and they discussed the Hall of Fame nominations that has to be done by Jan- January 31 and Board officials. That's it.
Do they have new Board officials coming in?
They're nominating.
Alright, that takes us to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Kales.
Okay. Well, our revised code requires me to submit the incidents of bullying that occurred in the first semester of the 2017-2018 school year. Compared to the second semester of 2016-2017, we had one less incident of bullying, but it's pretty consistent in terms of the number. We have the redacted cases there as well.
Thank you.
I do have some, I figured that with everything going on with our building projects, that I took the time to put together a quick synopsis of where we are in this process. I'm going to start with the sewer treatment systems in each of the schools. Chronological order, too. And I was going to start with Madison Avenue first. In July of 2016, a few things happened. One is the Lake County's utilities verified our sanitary sewers were not available on our site until the Red Creek Interceptor is constructed in the future. And that was a large infrastructure that was planned to help alleviate some of the limits of capacity over in that area. It was planned for many years, and from what I understand, it had a lot of momentum prior to the housing market crash in 2008. So, it is on hold, that, that extra infrastructure. Also, in July, we had a soil and site evaluation. We had a scientist on, on the grounds to look at the type of soil that's over at Madison Avenue. The soil proved very favorable over there. And in August of 2016, the Ohio EPA site evaluation occurred, and the feasibility of onsite sewage, sewage treatment system was approved. And basically, what that is, is that they come out, the EPA, to ensure that all our reports are accurate. They look at the site and the soils. March of 2017, our water use report was submitted to the Ohio EPA, and we tried to reduce the amount of gallons per day that they thought that our students would use. I think it was upwards around like 15 at the time, and we were able to get it down to eight, because we did a study of, of our water usage in each of our schools. All of them seemed pretty consistent except for, I think it was Haddon, we had the automatic flushers, and for some reason, even though it was a very small school, it showed that they were using a lot of water. We went in there and we took out the automatic flushers, so they're not flushing every five minutes or whatever it was, and now it's at a more reasonable consumption. In April, they did grant us that eight gallons per day per person. We believe that we're hovering around six to seven, but we can't argue with eight. Eight's fine. December of 2017, we had a permit to install application and plan submitted to the Ohio EPA, and in January 4, 2018, the Ohio EPA reviewed the letter. We reviewed, they reviewed it, gave us a letter back, eight comments requiring explanation or revision. And the same day, Laura Kramer Coons from Kramer Coons Consulting had a conference call with the Ohio EPA, and they discussed what they needed to adjust in that, in that review. One of the things, just so you know, is that we were going to place a fence just separating the, the drive hard surface where the drip zone was going to be a drip field, and they want us to fence the whole area. That's like one of the things that they wanted us to do. They were more concerned about, you know, vehicles going onto, onto the grass and property, which you can use that property, but not for heavy vehicles going over on a regular basis. So, they want us to put a whole fence around it. And we revised it and we resubmitted it January 18. Sewer treatment system update for Concord. On December 8, Lake County's utilities verifies that sanitary sewers were not available to this site without significant infrastructure addition. The EPA required that we explore sewer tie-in first, and it was deemed impractical. Lake County said the system was at capacity and would not allow us to tie in without any large infrastructure improvements to the tune of millions of dollars. January 7, soil and site evaluation was done, again with a scientist on site. We submitted a site review application to Ohio EPA, and that was January 11 of 2017, you know, about a year ago. The Ohio EPA did evaluation on the site, and on January 25, the Ohio EPA site evaluation report said onsite sewage treatment system would be approved. March 6, we had that water report submitted to the Ohio EPA again, they reduced it. For this particular site, we have it built, the system built at about 5,300 gallons per day. If you count the number of staff and students at capacity, the building's what, 625 is the capacity with 40 staff members, so that'd be 665. When we opened the building, we're not going to be at 665, we're going to be closer to probably 450, 500. But if you do the math at, at capacity, it is going to be eight gallons per, per day per student, or per staff member there as well. August 2017, the type of system was conceptually approved before we gauged in the actual design. We went to the Ohio EPA and said, "Hey, is this type of system, you know, permitted?" And they told us it was, and we wanted to make sure we got that okay before we actually started spending money on the actual design of the system. January 23, 2018, even though we don't have a conditional use permit by Concord or from Concord, we still did apply for the PTI, only because that if down the line we are approved either through Concord or through the courts, we don't want to be caught flat-footed, we want to make sure that they've seen the system, and, you know, they approve of the system, and that we can get it approved. Laura Kramer Coons did tell me that there are over 200 drip systems in Lake County residential in a smaller scale, and she said that there's about 30 that are actually in Concord. This is an update from our architects with some notes. I'm not going to go through all of them, because what's happening is, if you look at, I split it up into the first two weeks of December, last two weeks of December, and also the first two weeks of January, last two weeks of January. But as you can read through these, you're going to find that they are doing some, some middle, and they're getting some responses back from agencies requiring some modifications to some of the applications that we have. This is very common, it's not very major, they're minor things that we need to adjust. You can see there's a little bit of a difference between Painesville Township and Concord. Painesville Township approved our site review plan back on December, or Uh, Painesville Township, uh, approved our site review plan back on, uh, December or January 8th when we had our meeting here. It didn't take but, uh, a few minutes. They seemed very excited about having a, a school, um, in that location as well. But there's other things that we haven't talked about necessarily at the table and I'll point out a couple of them. January 2018, on January 4th, we received phased approval from Lake County Building Department for both projects up to rough structure and mechanicals in the building shell. But the, the next, they need to approve some of the finishes and I was kind of curious to why they would need to approve some of our finishes, you know? I can see the exterior because of color and, and texture and things of that sort, but, um, finishes, I wasn't really, uh, I didn't know why they needed to get that approved. And it's because of the material that we use. They want to make sure that all the material is up to snuff in terms of being approved by, um, building code, being approved by, um, the EPA. And, uh, so that's what we're going, we have to hire somebody to kind of keep track of some of the construction that we do as well. We have PSI, um, looks like, uh, the, the architects and construction company want to use, uh, PC, uh, PSI to do that. But I, I just wanted to give it to the board to make sure that they see how we're progressing along and, uh, hopefully, you know, this spring, we can get moving on it and the more, you know, through construction. Any questions? I also asked, uh, Mrs. Malacher to give a quick report on the closing of ECAT and how our school district is responding, uh, of the closing of the electronic classrooms of tomorrow.
So I'm sure many of you have heard that ECAT has closed due to whether it's reporting issues, financial issues, for whatever reasons, they have closed their doors. And that happened last Friday, I think officially. Um, ECAT is our, or was our biggest, um, online school where our students withdrew and that's where the majority of kids that we have that go online go. We have roughly 40 students total, um, who attended ECAT and last week we had a discussion about a way to approach this proactively rather than reactively when, um, students were scrambling around and, um, you know, some of them kind of being left not knowing what to do at this point. So we decided to reach out to the families that we had, um, on record as attending ECAT and let them know that Riverside has an online option. Online school is not for everyone, but for some students who either cannot or have not been successful in traditional classrooms, um, are finding success. Some of them are, some of them have not, which speaks to part of the reason perhaps why ECAT closed because there wasn't that monitoring piece. And we felt that in looking back at, um, maybe when some of them withdrew and chose to go to an online school, Riverside didn't have that option and we do now. So I started calling, I was originally going to kind of task it out and then I decided in my head how I wanted it presented and what I wanted to say to parents. So I started calling, I've made it about halfway through the, the, um, about 30 eligible students we think that would be able to come back. And if I can find a phone number, I am reaching out to families and letting them know, um, if you would like to, you, your student can come back here and attend Riverside's online program. They're Riverside student. Lake County ESC runs our online program, which is a Connections Learning Academy. We call it KLA. I'm asking that they meet with guidance counselors, um, especially our high school students because I want to make sure as much information as that, as a student can give us, because we don't have anything from ECAT, that the kids are on track to graduate like they're supposed to. I spoke with a girl who is a semester away from graduation and she didn't know what she was going to do. And I said, get the enrollment papers, get enrolled. I'm, we'll have to take your word for it now because we don't have transcripts. I don't have anything to go by, but it's only the, the third week of January. You have plenty of time to do these last two classes and be on track to graduate. And it was just, it was just circumstances that it wasn't that she didn't want to come to school. They had transferred in high school and she didn't want to attend a new high school, so she chose the online option and has been wonderfully successful and is this close to graduation and maybe, you know what I mean? All of that's up in the air now. I, I, we just talked as a team and, and our feeling was if we can do something proactively to help the students and the families in our community, maybe that sense of goodwill, they'll remember. You know what I mean? It really doesn't actively.
And just to make sure I'm, I'm fully tracking, so the, the young lady you just spoke of, if she does enroll and assuming the transcripts are correct, if the, when she's done with those two classes, she would get a Riverside diploma?
Correct. Because she will be a Riverside student. So when they enroll, so I've had a couple of positive, you know, responses, a couple I had to leave messages, a couple who have said they have found another online option and that's perfectly fine. I mean, it is what it is. There's, you know, I can't do anything about that. But overall, I feel like it's been a positive effort on the district's part to reach out to families and students of our district for whatever reason that have not been successful.
That's good. So as of right now, how many students have come back? And also there's, how many students do we get from being displaced from, uh, the Caribbean at all? Puerto Rico or, and how does that affect our class sizes?
The hurricane, I, I mean, I think we got a couple. I remember a couple of families coming to it, up, in to enroll. I don't know that.
No large.
Yeah, and no huge impact, I don't think, on the classrooms. Yeah. Then most of them had family here, so the transition was not necessarily difficult. They were coming to stay with families, so that helped to ease that transition a little bit. Um, and I would say at this time, I think we've had three people make contact of the maybe six that I spoke with and were interested. You know what I mean? So, like I said, we just try to be proactive this time.
Financially wise, um, Spalco, how, how does that work with, uh, any reimbursement?
Right.
From ECAT?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much for whenever, whenever any student goes to a charter school for this fiscal year, the state deducts $6,010 from us and gives it to that charter school. Now that ECAT is closed, those students who come back will get a prorated portion back for the remainder of the year of that $6,010. You know, the money that went to ECAT that, that, you know, they owe back to the state and all that stuff, it's probably gone, I would assume.
They're asking for eighty million.
Yeah, there's, yeah, they're, this ODE is asking for 80 million back and I'm sure they don't have that sitting around to, to give back. So, you know, and I did do some numbers and over the course of 10 years, ECAT took about $3 million from just our district through deductions over the last 10 years. We've had enrollments anywhere from 20 to 80 students over the years. And when I was looking at it, it was interesting that despite happened with ECAT when we made all the cuts, we had our financial troubles. And then over the years, the numbers have been slowly going down as students either come back here or those students have graduated and were declining enrollment. So it's been a little interesting to look at the numbers, but, you know, it's certainly an opportunity to bring some of those students back to us and could, could be a positive financially. Obviously it's not positive for the student having the transition back.
I'd say it's also a frustration even while we were applying for the straight A grants that ECAT, I think at one session got $3 million, we got zero.
Yeah. I think it's terrific that you took the proactive step of reaching out. I mean, that was maybe, it was a useful move for, for everyone involved, so, so terrific.
All right. You know what January is, right?
Yes.
It's, uh, School Board Appreciation.
Yes, it is.
Right. I did get a letter from John Kasich, Governor, and Mary Taylor, Lieutenant Governor. And it says, "John R. Kasich and Mary Taylor, Governor and Lieutenant Governor of Ohio, do hereby officially recognize School Board Recognition Month, January 2018. The service provided by the members of the Ohio City, Village, Local, and Joint Vocational Boards of Education and Educational Service Centers, governing boards, is critical to ensuring high-quality public education for Ohio schoolchildren. Through partnerships with teachers, school administrators, staff, and parents, school board members provide vital leadership and support for schools. And we thank you for your service and for the positive difference you make throughout our state." On behalf of, uh, our district, we'd like to say that boards of education are a much tested institution in Ohio. School board members make policy, approve contracts with employees, choose curriculum, adopt budgets, and select a superintendent, treasurer, and business manager to administer the district. They do all these tasks with the emphasis on what's best for children they serve. Being an effective school board member is no easy task, particularly in today's climate of change and challenge. School board members need to be knowledgeable about many complex education and social issues and carry out initiatives and directives from both federal and local state governments. To face these demands of governing our public schools, they give countless hours of personal time for the betterment of the community. And this board is no exception. We know you put in a lot of time to do what's best for the students in our district. So on behalf of our students, our administrators, our teachers, faculty, uh, faculty and staff, I would like to thank you for all you do for our school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeffries.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Mrs. Hard.
Thank you. That's very nice. What do you have for us?
Handy bars. Uh, just a couple of items before I go through the, the couple of slides I have. Just a few things, uh, as far as for Mr. Keles's comments on the construction, just wanted to, to point out a couple of next steps of what's going on going forward here. The project is currently out to bid. Uh, the construction documents are out there. Iconic Construction's our construction manager at risk. They handle the bidding process. They're having a pre-bid meeting on this Friday for all the contractors who are going to bid on a project to come and get more information about the project. Bids are due back on, uh, February 9th. They might extend it to February 14th. And then, um, at that time, we'll hopefully be able to award some contracts and, and move forward with construction. Also, there's, um, a little amount of homes is working on getting demolition permit for the, for one of the homes, the five acre property. They already have the permit to do demolition on the 10 acre property. He's working on applying for that and getting the demolition going on those homes. Uh, he's supposed to have those down by February 28th. And then there's also, uh, we have a, an approval of a asbestos, um, contract for Madison Avenue with EA Group on the agenda tonight. They'll go in over the spring break this year to do testing on the, like the flooring and the plastering things for the asbestos because we're looking at trying to remove some of that this coming summer in advance. So that way when we get to the following summer, when the demolition needs to occur, they can proceed faster with demolition by having, like, somebody asbestos flooring out. Now for the, for the slides. I wanted to go over, now that it's January, we get what's called Schedule A from the county. Kind of goes over our tax rates. Uh, so we always like to compare ourselves to the other school districts in Lake County. As you know, in May of 2017, we passed a 4.9 mil, uh, operating levy, which would be reflected in this tax year, well, in 2017 tax year that you pay in 2018. Madison also passed a 4.99 mil levy and currently passed a 7.07 mil renewal. This is last year, this is current year. We are still the third lowest effective tax rate in Lake County for school districts. And, you know, Perry, they have the power plant, so they're always, they haven't had a levy since 76, obviously with, uh, possible closing of that plant, that, that might change. But, you know, Madison is a close second as well, two, and then we're in third place at right now as, as far as the, the three lowest in Lake County.
So just curious, why, I, I know you, you pointed out that the, uh, Joint Financing District is not included. I, why, why was you not included?
Uh, because it's easier to cross-reference to like the Schedule A, these rates. I put an asterisk because the Joint Financing District applies to Painesville City, Riverside, Madison, and Perry. Uh, if you just add the 2.459 to the effective milage, it doesn't change the story, we're still third lowest.
Sure. I, I got it.
Painesville jumps to, uh, second place, but just a, I know it's, it's a little confusing. It's something, you know, Joint Financing District's unique in Ohio. We're the only one that has, has that, but I, you know, I just had it separated out that way just for, to make it easier for me to cross-reference between those.
Yeah, terrific.
Especially if someone's looking at their tax bill. If, uh, your tax bill looks under a field called Other, which is kind of, well, what's Other? That's the Financing District on your, on your tax bill. So going, um, on the 30, you know, our current effective milage is 36.60. So what levies make up that? This is just a quick summary of our levies. You know, you have inside milage, which has been around forever. Now, uh, you know, 76, 80, 86 levies. The 2009 substitute levy, that was a, uh, originally a 2004 emergency levy that was converted to a substitute levy. And then we have the, the May 2017 operating levy there for a total operating milage of 32.419. And then we have the permanent improvement levy, which replaced the 1.89 mil PI levy and the 1993 bond issued that was expiring. And then the, the construction project, the phase one, that, one of the things I wanted to point out, our phase one construction was originally a 1.92 mil levy, but based on the way that bonds were structured with the favorable interest rates and the premium we generated, the county lowered the effective rate down to 1.69 on that levy from, just from last year. Just because they'll, you know, we'll collect a little bit less than what the debt payments are, but we'll dip into that, uh, balance we built from selling the bonds at a premium. And then lastly on here, Walmart donated a pallet of school supplies to us in December. So this pallet here is what they sent us. Uh, Mr. Schlick and I went through the pallet a couple of weeks ago. There's a bunch of backpacks, notebooks, uh, binders, markers, and other supplies in there. And we're working on trying to divvy it up to like the elementary schools so they can give them to students in need.
Excellent.
And I sent them a nice, uh, thank you letter back in December. And then I'm just going to go through monthly reports now that December is closed and... Now that we're halfway through the year, I just wanted to, I'm going to do this pretty quick, the factual reports as always, we get posted on the treasurer's website, on our website. And so I'm just going to flip through, uh, to this report here is our fund balance report. This column here shows our cash balances. We typically don't want to ever see negative numbers here. The grant funds are okay because we get reimbursed on a reimbursement basis, so those always go negative. The Joint Financing District, uh, fund went negative just because of the timing of our payroll and when we get our taxing, it'll, it'll end at a positive, but just with the timing of things, it's currently negative, which is not currently a, a big deal at this time. For the appropriation summary, which is our budget, shows our current year budgets, what is carried for with my year. You never want to see negative numbers in the, in the last column, so as of now, we are within budget on all of our funds, which is where we should always be. And it shows what we made. Skip to this report this time. Actually, I'm going to point out one thing. This report here, it compares, these two columns compare fiscal year to date, this year to last year. And I wanted to point out on this report, our cash balance is currently almost $900,000 lower in our general fund this year to, from last year due to like phase out TPP, property tax, you know, handled personal property tax, things like that. And it's the timing of our expenditures. So that's an important thing to note, which is part of the reason why we needed the operating levy to go forward. You know, here in late January, early February. This revenue report for general fund, um, for property tax, we're currently about 42% collected for the year. That's because the new levy is collecting in January, February time, so that will catch back up. Uh, so it's not really lagging, just the timing of how we receive our.
Yeah, thanks. I just got my letter.
Yeah. Two items I wanted to point out was interest. You know, we, we only predicted 30,000 interest this year. We're already at 45,000 and we're only halfway through the year. And then for Medicaid school program fees, um, back in July, projected 150,000 for this year. We're at 433,000 right now. We, we received another $79,000 this month and another 12,000 coming this Thursday for this year. And what it is, is we finally got those long outstanding cost report settlements from 2011 through 2014. You know, in terms of Medicaid, they told me. through 2014, you know, in terms of Medicaid, they told me we're going to pay them as soon as possible, and, you know, they took about a year, as soon as possible in Medicaid terms. Those things have finally been settled, that's why I wasn't really projecting it, when we started, I'm like, it's already been seven years, am I really going to get it this year? Am I going to get it next year? So, we finally got those funds, so we obviously are well ahead of the game on that, on that. But the, this amount was reflected in the five-year forecast in October, because at that time, I hadn't known that they were really coming as soon as possible. And then, for expenditure report for general fund, you know, we're currently 50% through the year, so I'm just looking at total salary and wages, we're at 49.7%, fringe benefits at 49.5%. Purchase services were trending lower at 38.75%, which is always good to be spending less than we projected, and supplies at 41%. So, that concludes my quick review of the financial reports, and I just wanted to bring up two other items on tonight's agenda. There's a, we had a late addition of American Tower lease agreement extension, and that is for the cell tower they're going to put out back. Our current agreement was expiring, they wanted to extend it for, through September this year, so they're going to pay us $2,500 to extend that, and then, you know, they had to delay the tower, because the, the place they picked to put the cell tower had some wetlands, and they had to relocate and do some redesigns, so that caused the delay. And then, one other thing I wanted to point out, Michelle Gifford, our nutrition services director and I are working on a project, project right now, to look into how we pay our fees, like, online with credit cards, and looking to change systems. The My School Bucks, they increased their fee for food service to, I think, $2.49 per transaction, and, so we were looking into integrating our fee payments with Infinite Campus, which is our student information system, so now, if we decide to move forward that, parents can just log into Infinite Campus, where they already see the grades, and they can go right in there and pay their fees, and see what they owe all in one place, and the fees would be actually lower.
Well, that's best we can remember.
Some of it's on, you know, it's on percentage basis, so depending on what, how much you normally pay, you know, if you're paying a higher dollar amount, you're going to pay more on the fee, but if you're paying a lower dollar amount, you're not going to pay as much fee as, as a flat fee before. So, we're working through that, and hopefully to implement before the end of the school year, that way, because it's a big change for the food service department, because all their terminals will have to change over to the new software and app we come with that. So, we're thinking about trying to implement before the end of the school year, that way, next school year, we'll have it all, the king's worked out, as far as, you know, running the food, the cafeteria does. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Okay? That takes us to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a Consent Agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. First up, finance and audit, Mr. Hack.
Motion to approve the items listed on the Finance and Audit Consent Agenda, items A through D, as recommended by the treasurer. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to acknowledge the donations that are on here, we've got to pay all of the school supplies from our Walmart, and a $250 donation to the drama department from the Bolton Pratt Company. Thank you very much for both those.
Terrific. All right, can you call the roll, please?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel. Well, we did, okay, so personnel.
Mr. Hack?
Yep.
I think that's- Jeffries, I spoke, he'll, he'll continue to do the personnel, just because now, we don't have a separate personnel committee, so we'll, Mr. Jeffries is going to handle the personnel section.
Your turn.
Unless, unless Mr. Hack wants to-
I'm, I'm, I'm ready to go right now, so.
That works.
Motion to approve the items listed on the, on the Personnel Consent Agenda, items A through H, as recommended by the superintendent. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds, that would be you again, Mr. Hack.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Uh, motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds Consent Agenda, items A through C, as recommended by the superintendent. Is there a, a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mrs. Harden. Any, any discussion on the motion? Can you call the roll, please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Motion carried. Last thing that takes us to the Board of Education update, does anybody have anything to discuss? No? Board of Education update? Have you got something? Okay.
I wanted to, can we go back to, and have a, under Buildings and Grounds, I was looking at mine, mine was wrong, and it was separated earlier, items C and D, for the tree removal?
Yes.
That was separated earlier, and I had it separated, so, if we don't mind, can we have some discussion on that, and go back to the one for Concord, please?
Yeah, we can discuss that, because we made a tweak to the agenda from Friday, when we-
Yes.
We got the resolution from Mr. Riley for the tree removal, and the tree removal for both Madison Avenue and Concord would be handled by our construction manager at risk, through the construction manager at risk module, and so, we needed a special resolution drafted by Mr. Riley to, to do that, since, with the way, the way that we're going through that. What we need to do is, we need to, the trees need to be cut down between before March 31st, or, if not, because of Indiana bad season, we have to wait till October 1st. So, this was for the approval to allow Icon, to, once they get the, there's still an approval they need to get from the county before they can take those trees down, but based on the timing of the Indiana bad mating season, that we have to avoid April 1st to October 31st, we have to have that approved.
I, I understand that, but, under the Concord, because we don't have full approval, and we're, we want to go ahead and, and, and make a decision and, and taking, and cut these trees down now, without full approval, are we not jumping the gun? If we, for some reason or another, that, through litigation, it does not go our way, and we pay this astronomical fee for these trees removals, are we not going to be losing dollars?
Right. A, part of it is, by having the approval doesn't mean we're actually moving forward, once we have the approval from the county, we can move forward. The problem is, if we, if the litigation delays us, and, let's say, things are settled April 1st, well, now we have to wait six months till October, and now we're delayed a year on our building project. So, we're, we're kind of in a tight situation, where we have to have that, have that done by March 31st, otherwise, we're delayed no matter what the result, if there's any-
We're not bound by that decision, though, we can, it's our, it's the board's property, if they want to remove the trees, they can.
Right, right.
And I figure that, you know, down the line, for some reason, we have to sell that property to me, I mean, a developer would buy it, and it would be more valuable without trees, so they don't have any more-
Right, just as, in the same way with the demolition and things like that, the property, I believe, is, in fact, I would regard that as an improvement.
Right.
Be an improvement, but when we get our, our money back, Mr. Riley, I, I don't know how far we could elaborate on this with the, because this is through litigation.
The county has the, the, the big issue is stormwater.
Yes.
When you take out the trees.
With the environment.
We're waiting on them to give us a stormwater permit to manage water, because once you remove the trees, they soak up a lot of water. It does not require township approval, so the, they're, they're two, somewhat two separate And they need to come down, or, I mean, there, there is obviously a risk that we can't build the project, but I think the superintendent's points were taken, if we can't build there as a result of a court decision, then, are you better off, are we going to lose anything by selling the property without trees on it, or selling the property with trees?
Well, I think we stand to lose more by not taking, not moving forward at this point, because we, if we, to Gary's point, if we get a decision way too close to Indiana brown bad mating season, we are now six months behind the ball, and over a year behind, so we, it's a much greater risk, in my opinion, to not continue on the path that we're on.
But we, because the litigation, it's unknown how long this could play out, is that not correct, Mr. Riley?
Oh, absolutely true.
Right, but at the same token, we can't, we cannot sit and just say what-ifs, we have to continue to move forward. That is, that's the, the ultimate goal, is to get these buildings up, and if we were to not do this, and then, we get approved on April 1st, so now the trees don't come down, we are now building two buildings separately, and even losing more money by bidding them separately. We're not helping ourselves, by the way.
And I definitely, I mean, I guess I should, this going into the-
I do too, but it doesn't-
So, and I, I definitely agree with the sentiment that we need to, to move forward as best we can to, to maintain the schedule we have, and, because there are things we don't predict, that, or can't predict, that, that's one thing, but we, we own the property, if, if we are able to get the county approval, then, then I think it makes sense to move forward, just as if we, we are on schedule, to try to maintain schedule.
I understand that, but, I just wanted, my opinion out there, that I am for this project, but, I would like to see it totally, if, if everything was already approved, before we vote on this, but, I, I cannot accept, I cannot go this, this route, because we don't have full approval right now for the bill, and the, the cost to remove these trees is, is high, and we, we think we might get this back, and we don't know how long this litigation might, might take. This could take two years.
Steve, the trees are not to exceed $100,000, as it says on here, the, what we would spend by doing this later, far exceeds $100,000. If you're talking about wanting to be fiscally responsible on it, the right thing to do is to continue on this path. We're, we're talking about about $90,000, I think I read somewhere, right, for the tree approval, because it says not to exceed 100.
It's 69, 80.
69 for one, 15 for the whole.
Okay, so $69,000 versus what it would cost us by not moving in the direction we should be moving, would be so much more detrimental to us.
Right, I mean, we, we need to-
Makes no sense.
We need to tie, tee this up, such that, that we, we give every opportunity to keep the two schools on the same, you know, building schedule, and, and if we have to wait until after, you know, until the fall, to take those trees down, because we don't have all the approval now, then, then we are, we are spending even greater public money-
You're timing us.
-in that, in that situation. And I, I will tell you, I, there's, there's risks, certainly.
There is.
And if, and if we end up in a situation where we can't move forward, and we need to sell the property, I believe that, frankly, that would be an improvement, and it certainly depends on the markets, you know, we can't guarantee that, but, but, the bottom line is, if we're going to take advantage of the operational efficiencies that we've talked about, when having both schools online, not having to redistrict twice, and all those other things, we, we've got to do everything that we can in our control, in my opinion, to, to try to keep those two schools on the same construction schedule.
Right. I understand that. Can we separate this, please?
We've already voted on it.
All right.
It's done. That takes us to the Board of Education update, then. Is there anything else anybody, anyone's got? All right, then at 8:03 PM, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session to, for conference with legal counsel, related to pending or imminent court action, if I could have a second, please.
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much for coming tonight.